Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
President.
Mr. Radke.
President.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mrs. Vanas.
Here.
Mrs. Yergo.
Present.
Thank you. Counsel, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight's report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, I wanted to remind everyone that due to a scheduling conflict with the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference, the second city council meeting in March will be held on Monday, March 14th. So the next meeting is Monday, March 14th at the same time, 7:00. And also, I wanted to remind everyone, believe it or not, there are still houses that have holiday lights up, and they do have to be removed. Our code enforcers are out enforcing this restriction. So if you still have them up now with the longer days and the sunshine and the weather's improved a little bit, hopefully you can get them down quickly. We don't like to write citations for this, so we appreciate everyone's compliance. And also, I wanted to talk just a little bit about property values. As we've highlighted in the past, I wanted to draw your attention to the screen because we have more good news to report on property values. Just a couple of weeks ago, Crane's Detroit Business reported that Sterling Heights continues to have strong property values, along with a couple of other communities they noted, but I'm going to focus on Sterling Heights this evening. And I pulled out a part of the article that quote reads as follows, "Other parts of the area also saw sales bumps. Sterling Heights with almost 2,000 sales showed a 17% increase with property values now at, on average, $260,000." And I thought this quote was really important. It speaks to what we've been doing over the past few years. The amenities many of these cities have worked to create over the years, from parks to vibrant downtowns, have also had an impact on desirability. Residents take note as areas improve and continue to move to those parts of the region. So that's exactly what's been going on in Sterling Heights. Thanks to the voters, the Recreating Recreation Initiative was improved, and there were massive transformative improvements to our park system throughout the city, quality of life, services, and the list goes on and on. And that reflects very positively on property values. So the strong home values are reflected in property assessment notices, which, by the way, are going out this week. So you'll see these gains in your property assessment. So that's a very good thing. Knowing that homeownership creates wealth, there is a direct correlation with community wealth as well. So one of the reasons we're prospering as a community is because of a lot of these transformative initiatives that are going on, not to mention all the economic development activity with businesses expanding, commercial centers being improved, and so on and so forth. And of course, Sterling Heights continues to grow in population, and it's because of these reasons that we're seeing that, unlike many other areas of the state that are stagnant or declining in population, as most residents know, the state of Michigan's population has been very stagnant. So we're pleased that we continue to see this very strong growth in Sterling Heights. And I would like to take just a minute to talk about the Ukraine crisis and what we as a community may be able to do to help support Ukrainians and their suffering. The images over the past week showing innocent citizens of Ukraine under assault has been heartbreaking, to say the least. Council members have made a number of suggestions to show the city's support for Ukrainians as they suffer through the ongoing and unjustifiable invasion. And without objection from the mayor and city council, the following action items will be initiated as an expression of solidarity. First, the halo will be lit yellow and blue starting tomorrow night and remains so through the month of March. Our hope is that the thousands of motorists that travel that area every single day will take note of this lighting, keeping innocent Ukrainians in their thoughts and prayers. The Community Relations Department will be coordinating a special program to honor Ukrainians at the Cultural Exchange Program, which takes place on March 11th from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the city's community center. And what better event to honor the Ukrainian heritage than our own cultural exchange program? The clergy form and ethnic advisory committee will be involved in this special program. Sterling Heights has a very rich tradition of welcoming refugees from around the world. We've been doing that and a leader in that regard for decades. Refugees and the city as a whole have benefited greatly from this spirit of inclusiveness. We'll be reaching out to the refugee placement organizations so they know Sterling Heights is a safe harbor for Ukrainian refugees. And finally, the Community Relations Department is identifying charitable organizations such as the Red Cross and others, and will publicize links for residents that may wish to contribute to help Ukrainians during their time of need. Sterling Heights has an outstanding reputation as a compassionate, inclusive, and welcoming city. We'll do all that we can as a community to ease the pain of not only Ukrainians but others who may be suffering as well. We have a moral obligation to help our brothers and sisters during this crisis. And Mayor, so without objection, we'll proceed with those initiatives, and we welcome any other feedback and ideas that the city council may have. Thank you very much. And that concludes my report this evening.
Okay. Is there anyone who objects to anything that the city manager laid out? Is there anyone who has anything to add to it? Okay. Without objection, I think those are all great ideas. Our hearts certainly go out to the innocent Ukrainian people that are suffering this war of aggression, and we hope for a speedy resolution. Next item on our agenda, though, is a presentation, and this is a resolution of the Sterling Heights City Council recognizing and congratulating Connor Servita-Drobek for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. I have the honor of presenting this. Connor, thank you for being here today. I just want to read a little bit about Connor and his Eagle Scout project. Connor is a resident of the city of Sterling Heights, and he's a sophomore attending Brother Rice University, or Brother Rice High School, sorry.
Brother Rice thinks it's a university, just saying.
Yeah, don't sound like... De La Salle calls itself De La Salle Collegiate. I never really could understand what that meant. But Brother Rice High School, university soon enough, right, Connor? Connor's an active member of the Boy Scouts of America Troop 1478, which is based out of St. Anne's Catholic Grade School in Warren, Michigan. Connor made a commitment to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest rank attainable through BSA. For his mandatory Eagle Scout project, Connor collected gently-used athletic shoes for underprivileged students in the Philippines who lacked the means to purchase athletic shoes and equipment for training and competitions themselves. Connor's mother, Susanna Servita-Drobek, served as his inspiration for this Eagle Scout project. Suzanne emigrated from the Philippines, and her participation in athletics in her native country helped her to attain the dream of becoming a nurse here in the United States. Since its inception in 1911, only 4% of scouts have earned the rank of Eagle Scout, which requires that a scout earn a minimum of 21 merit badges, demonstrate an ideal attitude based upon the scout oath and law, provide service and leadership, and plan, organize, and execute the Eagle Scout project. So the city of Sterling Heights is fortunate to have you, Connor, and other young men and women like you who are dedicated to public service, dedicated to making your community better, dedicated to doing whatever you can to help around the world. And don't we know now, if we had more people like you, the world would be a much better and safer place. Connor, I want to congratulate you. I want to welcome you to come up, and you're welcome to say anything you'd like. I've got a resolution here. I'd like to present it to you myself. Round of applause for Connor. Can I ask you a couple of questions then? Okay. You stand right here. Talk into the mic.
Can't get away from it.
So I'm curious. I'd like to hear more about the project. You know, we've had Eagle Scouts in the past. This one's really interesting and unique to me. I just wanted to ask you, where did you come up with the idea? I know, you know, we heard your mom is originally from the Philippines. How did you come up with that idea?
So I've talked to my mom before, and she's like, I ran track in seventh grade, and this is honestly kind of what kind of snowballed me into getting this idea. When she ran track in the Philippines, she didn't train in actual running shoes. She trained in her school shoes. And I was like, wow, that's like, not right. And especially here, everyone, like, everyone in my school, you know, they have people doing, like, field events, they still have track spikes. And I was like, people in the Philippines that do run track don't have these things, and they need them to run.
So how did you find the used gym shoes to donate over there?
Actually, I started this in the eighth grade, so I went to my current, my middle school and my current high school and asked for donations from anyone who had, like, shoes that they just, you know, they had gently-used shoes that they didn't want anymore, and they just donated them.
And how many pairs of shoes were you able to collect?
I'm not sure on the exact number, but it was around 80-ish.
Awesome.
Wow, that's great.
And so you shipped them over? Did you hear from anyone over in the Philippines who received the shoes, and did you get any feedback?
I didn't get anything from, like, the people who received them, but I got, like, emails back from my sponsors in the Philippines, who actually happens to be my mom's track coach and her friend, or his friend.
Awesome. You know what? Willie, we got to get a picture with you, too. Don't you want a picture?
We have a commendation.
You've got one, too. So, okay, so Connor, why don't you have a seat in that first row, even though it says "Don't sit there"? Hey, Willie, come on up. You've got your, do you want to say a few words, and then I'll come down and take a picture with you, too?
Good evening. I have here with me the president of the United States Filipinos for Good Governance. This is a group of Filipinos in Michigan actively involved with community services and events. And we heard about this, what's going on, through the mayor. So we were invited, if we can present also something, because we would like also to recognize our fellow, we call it kababayan, countrymen, for this kind gestures to our people back home. So here's the president of our organization, Brenda San Agustin, maybe to read the commendation from our own organization, signed by me as the executive director, and her by the president. Okay, Brenda, it's your turn.
Thank you for this opportunity that is given to us, the USPNOI for Good Governance, to recognize our fellow men. Our young guy here is an inspiration. This certificate of appreciation is presented to you, Connor Servita-Drobek, for your services and for your dedication and for your generosity in collecting those slightly-used shoes, athletic shoes, that will be your trash here in America is a treasure back home, and we value that. And so we would like to present this to you, signed, Willie D. Chavez, our executive director, and myself, Brenda San Agustin, the president of the USPNOI for Good Governance. And we hope that in the future, there will be more like you. Congratulations.
And with the mayor here, we cannot end this presentation without a picture-taking because this will be on Facebook tonight.
I believe that.
All right.
Okay.
Yes, let Marissa, can Marissa?
I can take one of his own.
Yeah. Where do you want us, Marissa? Is this good?
Yeah, we'll do, um...
How about with his family? Right, can his family come up, too?
No, we're not.
His very proud parents and grandma?
Okay.
I will be dwarven.
Marissa will take pictures for you guys.
Okay. Close.
Mrs. Burke, will you, Willie?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, counsel. We do have a suggested action.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to adopt the resolution recognizing and congratulating Connor Servita-Drobek for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Just very happily, we congratulate you, Connor. Thank you for being the wonderful and inspirational person that you are, and congratulations to your parents. And I think this is grandma. I'm not positive. So congratulations to you guys. You've raised a wonderful young man, and we look forward to other great things from you, Connor, because you're just a junior, so there's more to come, we know. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Zarco?
Mayor Taylor, yes. I just want Connor to know that, I know that you, this was a project that you worked on for several years, but this, you being an Eagle Scout will be a recognition that you will take through your life, the rest of your life, no matter what you do. You will always be an Eagle Scout, and that's something to be very proud of, no matter what occupation that you choose, but that's awesome, and congratulations.
Anyone else? If not, I want to congratulate Connor, you again, your parents, your family. Great job, great work, and we look forward to more great things from you in the future. So again, one more big round of applause for Connor. Counsel, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? We'll start with Mr. Nelson.
I didn't think there was going to be anything on it this time. Ken Nelson, 40862 Fire Steel. I am to talk about item A of the consent agenda, the February 15, 2022 meeting minutes. In the meeting minutes, on page seven, it says, when I was opened, you opened the floor for public comments, it says, "Ken Nelson, item 7J, pulled backup and claimed, this is adding 12.5 million in additional debt. Noted the petition of the people can overturn this." The record is going to show, if you watched the meeting, that I said, I stated, I did not claim. And so I would like to have the council change that word from claimed to stated. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Nelson. Anyone else under the consent agenda? Not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we have two boards or commissions, Housing Commission with one vacancy and the Arts Commission with two. This is a council appointment to an open seat, partial term ending June 30, 2025. We'll start with the Housing Commission. Is there anyone who'd like to make an appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yeah, let me get back. Resolve to appoint Pamela Terry to the Housing Commission to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No.
No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, our two openings on the Arts Commission. We'll probably have to take these separately because they are different term-ending dates. So would anyone like to start with either the term-ending 6/30/23 or 6/30/25?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
I'll start with 2025 and do 2023 as well, if that's all right.
That should be fine.
Okay. So resolve to appoint Steve Crouchman to the Arts Commission to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, sir.
No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Sarowski?
Thank you. And resolve to appoint Christina Richardson to this Arts Commission to a term ending June 30, 2023, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, sir.
No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Sarowski?
Thank you. And resolve to appoint Christina Richardson to this Arts Commission to a term ending June 30, 2023, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the office of, excuse me, the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, sir.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Nelson.
I'm so happy, Mr. Taylor.
Well, I'm just curious whether we're going to have claims or statements. Oh, me today. Claims or statement.
By the way, the fact that you rushed through everything there and adopted your consent of your meeting minutes means that you didn't change that word. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. That's why Mr. Inks was over here smiling. So I'm up here, I have my three minutes and 40 seconds left. I want to talk about, first thing is, I was promised, when I brought up the issue, about eight days for meeting minutes, that it would be brought to the council on what we're supposed to do. I never got that. We're blowing it off. And I understand why you're blowing it off. You know, that's not really. So the deadline for minutes to be made available to the public, I would like to know about that tonight. I talked about meeting minutes and how people are quoted at these meetings. The last one was in February 1st, where it says, this was communication from citizens, and it says, "Ken Nelson talked about his opposition to council's recent adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 25 of the City Code by adding Article 1." It sure tells people what Ken Nelson was talking about. I think I talked a little longer than that. Would people come up here and they talk to the council? If you can't address it, you can at least put it correctly in the meeting minutes. Okay? It's not just about the council. So I've got that, I've got that. And the only other thing that I have is, you need to find a picture that is the one you're going to use for your campaign. Congratulations on announcing, but you have three different pictures. I saw one on Fox News, and I saw one on Macomb Daily, and one in Detroit. Pick one of them and tell them to use it, okay?
I'm very old, Mr. Nelson. I got a lot of pictures.
Well, the one picture in Macomb Daily was you in about, what, in your 30s? So anyway, anyway, that's all I have to say. Just start listening, but I do want to hear about the meeting minutes, as it has to do with Planning Commission and monthly meetings of the other part, or the other commissions. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Who'd like to be next? Take Mr. Surga.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager, city clerk. I'm here today on behalf of the Drug Free Coalition. With me, I have Erica Bradberry and Marissa Russo, Mark Krasubski as well. And the National Black Bloom Day is this Sunday, March 6, but in Sterling Heights, we are having it this Thursday, March 3, at 5:30 p.m. at Christ Lutheran Church. It's on Canal Road. It's open to the public. The reason behind Black Bloom Day is, we remember everyone we've lost, and we pay respects to the family members that have to go in, go on with their lives after losing a family member. Don't need to tell anyone, but the epidemic of opioids, it affects everyone, all ages, all races, men, women. It affects anyone these days, especially with the pandemic, the numbers have only increased and got worse. Light refreshments will also be there for anyone that wants attendance. Open to the public. Again, that's this Thursday, March 3, at 5:30 p.m. Thank you.
Well, and I have a resolution. I have a certificate. You want to take a picture with this?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Come on, you guys have t-shirts.
Come on, Karen. Hi, Karen.
There's your t-shirt, Mark.
All right, we have with us State Senator Valvoino. He's making his way up to the podium.
As well as?
As well as. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Stephanie Chang. I am also State Senator in Detroit and Down River. And we figured we'd come up together. I am currently a State Senator in Detroit and Down River, like I mentioned, but with redistricting, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve a precinct of Sterling Heights. Very excited about it. Every single neighborhood will matter to me, and I will work as hard as I can. You know, I won't go into too much of my background. Just really wanted to be here to listen in and hear what was going on. But before I ran for office, I was a community organizer, worked for nonprofits, doing advocacy and organizing work, and have always been really focused on uplifting values of opportunity and access and justice. Very proud of being able to work across the aisle to get things done, and hoping to continue that track record, and looking forward to meeting all of you. So, just wanted to be here and introduce myself and listen to what was going on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Members of Council. And I also am here to introduce myself. Many of you, or not many of you, several of you I've known for many years on a personal basis, and there are others that I do need to get to know. I just hope that I have the opportunity to be able to serve you over the next four years. The district has changed dramatically than I'm presently, and in the new district, will take in half the city of Sterling Heights between Van Dyke and Hayes, and Warren between Van Dyke and Hayes, the city center line, then going into the east side of Detroit, all the way down to Jefferson. But again, I look forward to, to meeting those that I don't know. And again, thank you for this opportunity, just to stop by this evening and say hi. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you both for being here. It's, it means a lot to us. We have a great relationship with our state representatives and our state senator. They've been very helpful in making sure that our interests here in the city of Sterling Heights are heard in Lansing. We have 134,000 people, and Senator, even though you might only have one precinct, I can promise you, you're going to be hearing from us more than any other city that you might represent. We don't care if it's one house, one precinct, or the whole city. You're going to be our state senator, and you will too, probably. I mean, there's an election still, but, but we appreciate you being here, making that introduction. We, we have very strong feelings about how the state and the city can partner, and this is a great first step. So, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir, I'll take you first, sir. Well, she's already up. I'll get you next.
Hello, my name is Abby Wolf. I'm a, I've been a resident of Sterling Heights my whole life, and I am currently a student in college. I'm curious about how to make a bill or a proposal for the government, and I'm kind of interested in, I have some ideas, despite my lack of experience as a voter. But is there a person I could get information from or stay in touch with to kind of learn more?
Yeah, why don't you do this? Why don't you write your contact information on a piece of paper there and give it to the city clerk, and then she can circulate it amongst all of us. I'll reach out to you. I'll send you an email or text or something, find out what it is you're interested in, and then I can help, you know, put you in contact with either the right council member or department head.
Wonderful.
Fair enough?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. It's good to see you all here again. Just called, just come up here to see, you know, if there's any update on dispensaries. Again, you know, social equity applicant is me, and I just want to see if you guys got any update or what's not. That's pretty much it. You guys know my face, you know. I love you guys too, just like, that's what I was coming up for.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll get you an update. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Stephen Thiel. I was formerly a resident at 401-844 Ryan Road, but right now I reside in Gross Point at 474 Calvin. I was actually coming here to thank the police department because there was an unfortunate incident where the wrong home was raided by the Sterling Heights Police Department. I'm not sure who's aware of that, but this happened the other day on my birthday, actually, while I was at dinner with my daughter. The Sterling Heights Police came barging through our front door, and I understand mistakes happen. So, I wanted to commend the city, or the police department, for being willing to have dialogue about the mistake that was made. And hopefully, we can work through the specifics of it, so I can better understand exactly what happened. And that way, I can better communicate to my daughter that the police won't be coming back while she's sleeping to, I don't know, hurt her father or something like that. So, but another thing I actually wanted to ask was, maybe the City of Sterling Heights Police Department could have a process where there's a phone number they could call, and if their home is accidentally raided or something like that, somehow harmed by the police department, admittedly, they could call this number and work through, you know, whatever is needed. And sometimes it's just an apology. I'm not looking for money, but I actually had a bad experience. I got the wrong phone number when I first called the City of Sterling Heights, and it wasn't helpful at all. Whoever I talked to just, I don't know, I guess lacked the necessary skills to communicate any kind of resolution under $10,000 cost at my expense. You know, it's not easy to just fire off a check to a lawyer every time something, you know, slips the wrong way. So, it's nice that the police were willing to discuss this and further discuss it as we, over the next few weeks, hopefully. Yes, that's really all I have to say. Sometimes it's just understanding why, why it happened, where the city's police department was coming from, how it happened, what I maybe can do differently, and then maybe also better understanding where the police went wrong, and maybe what they should do, and, you know, be a leader in that respect to do as little harm as possible while you guys are enforcing the laws that you have to enforce. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, just one comment on meeting minutes. I did want to add that the minutes that are provided are not a verbatim transcript. They are a summary of the meeting. In almost all cases, when a resident wants to learn more about a meeting, they have a couple of choices. One, they can either watch a meeting, many people do, or we rebroadcast our city council meeting. So, if anyone's interested in a given topic, they can easily go to our on-demand service and fast forward or navigate to that section of the meeting pretty quickly. But I just wanted to clarify that minutes are not a verbatim transcript. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Kasubski?
Nothing, Mayor.
Go on to reports from city council. Any reports, any new business, council? Going once.
I, I.
Mr. Yanis?
Yeah, I was just waiting to see if anybody else had anything. So, let me, let me take care of the light stuff first, and then I got something that's a little heavier, and I think it's going to take some time for us to talk about. But March is, two things, March is reading month. So, if you get a chance to read to a youngster, that's a great thing to do. I've already contacted the library, but apparently, the dance card is full. They don't need any politicians reading to the kids, but. Probably a good thing. Probably, probably a good thing. But yeah, March is reading month, and then, as I was walking out the door, my wife reminded me, March is also Social Worker Month. So, National Social Worker Month. And I know we have a social worker now on staff, and so I just want to recognize all the social workers out there and all the great work that you do. Now, oh, and can I say one thing, take a point of personal privilege, is Senators Chang and Voino came up here. I have to say, and I hope I don't embarrass Stephanie, but when you leave the state legislature, you're allowed to, a goodbye speech, and it's supposed to be five minutes, and some people go on for like 25 minutes, but whatever. And I had my speech all prepared, you know, and you say goodbye to friends and colleagues and everybody else. I did not realize just how emotional I had become about leaving the legislature after six years. And I started blubbering like a baby. It was very embarrassing. And while I'm standing there trying to get through my speech and holding back the tears and choking them back, out of the corner of my eye, I see this little arm and a box of Kleenex come and put up the Kleenex in front of me, and it was Stephanie. She had come all the way from the back of the room and took care of me. So, I'm getting emotional, sorry. That's the kind of person she is. Not that Paul's a bad guy, but he never bought a Kleenex. So, colleagues, I was going to pull item F from the consent agenda this evening. I didn't do that because, you know, we have to, when we do that, we have to focus specifically on that agenda item. And I want to talk about something bigger and broader than that. But if you notice that that consent agenda item was for fertilizing weed control, control of algae in ponds. And if you read the backup material, you'll, you'll see that a lot of the chemicals that are used are carcinogenic. The fertilizer that is used gets into the sewer and stormwater systems, end up in the Great Lakes, causing grasses to overgrow and die and rot and smell, and also the algae blooms as well. We spent a lot of money to solve problems that also create problems. And that took me back. So, that, and that's a two-year program, so that's over $90,000 we're spending to make our grass green and keep weeds off of the posts on the medians. But that led me back to the pathway behind Freedom Hill, and the $17,000 a year that we're spending to just mow the grass. So, $91,000 to control weeds over two years, you know, $17,000 to mow that grass, and then how much more are we spending to mow the grass throughout the entire city? And to me, that is not sustainable. And this is really the low-hanging fruit of sustainability, right? So, that, that led me to our presentations a couple of weeks ago at our recent meeting, where our, some boards and commissioners and departments gave us presentations. And one of the, one of the commissions that presented to us was the Sustainability Commission. And they have 15 points, key points, within their presentation that they felt the city needs to take up. And I'm not sure how that's going to happen, because we don't really have a system of committees. We don't, outside of these meetings and, you know, our budget presentation, we really don't have any other official meetings to talk about those items that are important that may become pieces of an ordinance or a piece of legislation. And I know through conversations with not only people from the Sustainability Commission, but with other boards and commissions, those folks who don't get paid, they put in their own personal time, they put their heart and soul into these efforts, they're starting to feel that their time is not valued, that they come, they present stuff to us, here it is, we look at it, we put it on a shelf, it collects dust, and we move on. And especially the Sustainability Commission, if, you know, we know that, that climate change is real, that it's affecting our climate, it's affecting our food supply, it's affecting migration of human beings, it's, and we all have to do our part. And I thought the Sustainability Commission did a great job, and I think we're doing a disservice to the work that those folks did by not taking their, their positions, their points, and implementing them into the day-to-day business of this city. And folks, I am not sure, colleagues, I am not sure, how are we going to do this? Are we going to call special meetings? Do we need to schedule meetings on a regular basis, a quarterly, whatever, to talk about very specific things? I'm throwing this out here because I want some feedback from my colleagues. I don't know how we're going to do this. I am concerned that people are going to start dropping off boards and commissions because they don't feel valued, that we're going to have trouble getting people onto boards and commissions because they see that nothing's happening with, with the existing boards and commissions. I don't want to lose these folks. These are, these are smart, hard-working people. We need their input, and we need to take that input seriously. So, so I'm throwing it out there for discussion amongst my colleagues. I know this is a bit of an ambush because we didn't pre-talk about this, and I, that's certainly not my intent. But again, unless I pick up the phone and call every single person, you know, individually, there's no way for us to communicate that, right? So, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, I got a couple other things, but I want to, before I get to those, I just want to throw this out there. If anybody else on, the council wants to give me their thoughts on this, I'd like to hear them.
Okay, a little unorthodox.
It is very unorthodox, but I don't know that we have a process.
Let me, I guess, ask you. So, outside of the, like, what we're doing now, which is that, you know, anybody on any board or commission obviously can speak at any meeting, and then the council can at any time come up and during this portion of the meeting, ask for the administration to consider something, you know, ask the administration to prepare a report on something. Is it, are you saying that that process isn't working?
So, yeah, I am saying that. I, I just think so. If it's, if it's me, Henry Yanis, that says, oh, I think, you know, climate change is a, is an important issue, and, you know, I have all these, these checkboxes that I need to have checked off, well, and, no, maybe somebody else doesn't, or maybe there's something else I haven't thought of. And there really needs to be a back and forth. We really need to have input from other council people, from members of the public, you know, especially when you look at the Sustainability Commission report and the impact that it could possibly have on the city in a positive way, but also in a very big way. It's, it's got to be more than just me saying, asking the administration to do a report. And I know this is how we've done this in the past. I'm just not sure that this is really the right or the smart thing to do when it comes to making major changes in how the city operates.
Okay. Anyone have any ideas? Anyone that want to comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
We talked about this with strategic planning. The Sustainability Committee has brought forth, as Mr. Anix said, some great ideas. How do we implement them? We have budget coming up. Is there some way that administration could throw in a meeting there where they would take the, what was it, 12 issues?
It was 15.
Help me out a little bit. 15 issues, that we could make that part of our budget process, have administration take a look at those 15 issues and see what could work for the city, how we could work it into our plan for the next upcoming year, whether it means they meet with the committee, and did you put them in the order of importance, what is most important? As an example, Facebook, I'm getting addicted to it. We have people that say, we're running off all the wildlife in the city. We need to have more green spaces. We have areas out there that we could take our art money and purchase additional property to protect that wildlife. We had a gentleman showing pictures of deer walking down the trail. He took pictures of deer, and he fed them. of deer walking down the trail. He took pictures of deer, and he fed them. Maybe there's something that we might get a group together, or some teens or something, that would be willing to feed the deer in an area where they do gather. I know my son used to take apples and corn and feed the deer in backyard of our cabin. Things like this. And if we could somehow work that into maybe the budget process, administration has already heard some of our ideas that we like from the committee, and I totally agree with Mr. Yannis, that if we don't pay attention to what our boards and commissions are telling us, yeah, we're going to lose them. And they do a fantastic job. And I would like to, I agree with him. I'd like to take their ideas. And maybe administration needs to take those ideas that we bring up here at the table and try to work it into our plans for the future. That's all right now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I guess, I'm just confused what we're talking about. I appreciate the hard work the Sustainability Commission does. And they presented us with their suggestions. They're a recommending body. We are a policymaking body. If any of us want to implement any of the things that they recommended to us, all it takes is a motion supported by three colleagues at this table and the motion maker to pass it. Even though they're a recommending body, I read their report with interest, and I think it's very, very good. But at the end of the day, we make the decisions, and we are the policymakers. And though the Sustainability Commission is important, I'm not gonna say I agree with every one of their suggestions or every one of their recommendations. It takes us to discern what is in the best interest of the city. So I guess I am happy with the recommendations. I will read them with interest. I will support the ones that I feel are appropriate. But I'm not gonna substitute their judgment for my judgment. I would like to have the people of the city to put my judgment first. Though I don't want them to go away thinking that we're not listening to them. We are listening with very deep interest. I mean, I read their report, and I think it's very good work. But at the end of the day, you know, it's a balancing act, everything we do. Because we have a ton of recommendations. We have recommendations from our youth advisory board. We have recommendations from any other committee. And it's a balancing act of what everyone wants, what we can afford, and our own policy preferences. So if something the Sustainability Commission put forward strikes your interest and really want to engage with, we should talk about that. You can bring it up in a meeting. Let's do it. But at the same time, I'm not gonna substitute their judgment for my judgment. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mrs. Schmidt. So, Mr. Yannis, you're not just referring to the Sustainability Commission.
No, all the boards and commissions across the board.
So, I guess, the first thing I would like to start with is, our commissions meet monthly. Some of them meet more often, some of them less often. However, we never see minute meetings, or meeting minutes. So we don't know what's being discussed in a lot of these. So I think that would be a good start, because there is a city liaison on every one of these commissions and committees. And I think that's a good start for me to see what the mindset is in all of these committees. So that if there is something that one of us or four of us want to bring forward, then we can bring that discussion. But we don't know what we don't know, because we're not hearing as much feedback as we could. So that would be my suggestion as a start.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry.
No.
So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate those comments, especially Mr. Radke's comments. And I'm not by any means suggesting that our boards and commissions are gonna take over the legislative process. This, to the point, we are the legislative body, and we are the ones who direct city administrations. City administration doesn't work on its own. It takes direction from council. And unless we give city administration direction, they're not going to act. And so if we do find the Sustainability Commission, the Arts Commission, whatever, has presented some advice to us that they think we should take up in one way, shape, or form, turn it into an ordinance or whatever, then we need to discuss that. What I think is, what normally happens is one person will say, I think we should do this, and we want city administration to, the direct city administration do this, and it comes back. And, but that's one person. And then the other six of us have to kind of, you know, figure it out, right? And I just don't think that that's an effective process, especially when you're talking about something major, something large, something that changes how we do business on an everyday basis. Again, I don't have any solutions. I just wanted to bring this up. I have a real concern. Based on conversations, based on conversations, that people on these boards and commissions get frustrated, they don't feel like they're being heard, and they're gonna start walking away. And yeah, you know what, someone else will sign up and will fill their slot. It doesn't change a thing. So, you know, food for thought, maybe we'll talk about it again next meeting or another meeting, or, you know, certainly, I hope no one felt like I'm putting them on the spot, but I just didn't know what other forum to bring this up in. And I wanted all of us to have input, because it's important for all of us to have input. And it's important for all of us, you know, I just hate that we would have constantly four, three votes, because four people want something and three people don't want it. And we don't have that conversation that allows give and take to where we can craft something that all seven of us can support because it's good for the city. It's good for the 135,000 residents of the city. And really, this is, my point here is always about the betterment of the city as a whole. And that's that. So I appreciate the time for that discussion, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully we can continue that discussion. And I encourage the rest of my colleagues to talk to people on boards and commissions and, you know, ask them honestly how they feel about, you know, what they do and so forth. So, and so having said that, I would like to, city administration without objection, to provide, city council next meeting, the total cost for all lawn care based on the contracts that we have for cutting, mowing, weed control, et cetera.
Any objection?
I hope not.
Okay.
Clarification, or you want it for one year?
Well, whatever contracts we have. So the one we passed tonight was actually a two-year contract for $90,000. So whatever the contract reads, whether it's one year, two year, three years, so, the total of our contracts.
Well, I don't know that that would be very helpful or relevant information.
Right.
I think we should, I would recommend or suggest, you know, like, what is an annual grass-cutting contract? Because if one contract goes for five years and one contract goes for one year.
It's skewed.
What information are we actually getting?
Okay, okay, I get your point. Yes. Yeah. How much do we spend annually on lawn maintenance? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Henry. Anything else?
Yeah, one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So, without objection, again, from city council, I would like the city management to provide city council with a proposal to develop and implement a recycling program for city operations, very specifically city operations and parks and recs event, events. And I would like them to provide that to us in 60 days, and to be reported to city council at the first meeting in May.
Okay. Any objection?
Just an addendum to that. The county parks, or county Department of Public Works has a program, and a program director, Claudette Wisniak, who has a program, you can partner with her. She would be able to help you with that right away. I can get you directly in line with her.
Yep.
Okay. Mr., anything else, Mr. Yannis?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Vanderpoel, any, why don't we start with, why don't we start with the recycling? Any clarification needed there, or do you have clear direction?
Mayor, I think it's pretty clear. When we report back, we'll highlight the recycling program that we do have in place now for our city facilities, and we'll note areas where we think it can be expanded, potential costs, and any logistical issues. And I think that would cover what Councilman Yannis is looking for.
Okay. Anything else on the main topic Mr. Yannis was speaking on?
Sure, Mayor. A couple of thoughts come to mind, because Councilman Yannis and I have spent some time talking about this, and I share some of his concerns on the topic. First, with regard to the low-hanging fruit, I think we can do a better job of having the commissions report back to the city council more regularly. Minutes is an easy one. We can start with that right away. Not all the boards do formal minutes, but nevertheless, we can come up with meaningful updates that we can provide to city council monthly via notes slash minutes, summaries and the like. In addition, as Councilwoman Kosky mentioned at strategic planning, we had some wonderful presentations from the African-American Coalition, the Community Alliance, and the Sustainability Commission. But those are just three of our incredibly valuable commissions. So it would be good to hear from all of them throughout the year. So we can schedule those presentations where the chair or designee presents at a council meeting and gives a, you know, 15, 20-minute presentation on major initiatives that they're working on. So I think that will help some. In addition, you know, I think that will give us the mediums to better communicate the many initiatives that we are implementing. You know, just by way of example, I just jotting down notes here, when we think about sustainability, almost all of which is being covered by the Sustainability Commission in one way or another. We have probably the most robust non-motorized transportation plan that we've ever had in the city's history. And that falls under the auspices of sustainability. We've talked extensively about more open space. In fact, the city council on the consent agenda tonight just set the public hearing for a topic we'll be discussing at the next city council meeting to acquire additional open space in the city, in the southwest quadrant of the city. So, you know, open space in, under the banner "Sustainability" is front and center in a lot of things we're doing. At strategic planning and through the American Recovery Program, better known as ARPA, we're talking about community gardens and extending our bike height trail system, and lead certification of new buildings in the city, including our buildings that we're building for the city. DPW is a great example. Again, all under the Sustainability Plan. Universal recycling, we've been talking extensively about that. I think the council firmly believes that we need to have universal recycling. We need to address that in our next refuse contract. The PACE program, which provides funding to homeowners who aren't able to do this on their own to make energy efficiency improvements, again, reducing our carbon footprint, all under the auspices of the Sustainability Plan. The tree preservation ordinance is soon gonna be coming before you. Again, this is an initiative of the Sustainability Plan, Sustainability Commission. And the list goes on and on there. So the point is, a lot of what the Sustainability Commission is looking at studying, even in the short term, is being implemented in one way, shape, or form. And perhaps we just need to do a better job of communicating that and expounding on it. So I think these more regular reports will help. Now, some of the initiatives take years to implement. Increasing our tree canopy, that's not gonna be done next year. That takes a sustained effort over many years to increase our tree canopy from 15% to 30%. But nevertheless, we have a plan that we're working on. When you shift focus to other boards, like the youth advisory board and the Community Alliance, you know, the Juneteenth Day came out of those boards, the Pride Day came out of those boards. So the city council is listening to them and is implementing a lot of their ideas. But again, I think we can better communicate some of these advancements, if you will. The African-American Coalition, we know just from this past month, we did more Black History programming through the library than we've ever done before. And it's because of their effort and their suggestions and ideas for programming. The Historical Commission, we've made great advances in expanding the museum at the Upton Center, creating videos of our historic areas and cemeteries throughout the city. And that too came out of the Historical Commission. And, you know, I could go on with, go on and on with the Ordinance Board of Appeals and so on. So these boards are incredibly valuable. They're giving the city council great advice. And our staff liaisons and in so many ways, we are implementing what they're doing. And I'll just conclude by saying, an idea that Councilman Yannis and I discussed was having a more meaningful follow-up to our strategic planning. We go through strategic planning, and then we have to wait until the next year, you know, to see, okay, how do we do with the ideas that you all brought up last year and the year prior? How are we making progress? And oh, by the way, what's the prioritization of the 20 ideas that were brought up by council? We can't do them all. So then how do we prioritize them? And is there consensus on the city council to do that? So the thought is to have a follow-up strategic planning meeting in, say, June, July, where we can report back on progress from strategic planning, and also highlight areas where we need better direction from city council and some of the ideas that were brought up. That list of action items is gonna be going out to city council this Thursday. And once you have a chance to review it, then we can start thinking about, okay, how do we prioritize this list then? How do we devote the resources necessary to get it all done? So just in conclusion, I think that the issues brought up are very good. It's all about continuous improvement. And I think, you know, we can satisfy the needs of council by giving this some more thought, too. Thank you.
Okay. I think we have time for one more council member. It was very thorough. It was good. And I'm being facetious, because I got a lot tonight. So, okay.
Great.
Anyone else on reports, new business? Mrs. Sarowski?
I will do a quick, very quick advertisement. Not very personal, but still. So I just wanted to mention that Friday, the 11th of March, is the cultural exchange. So please, residents, remember that this is probably the, one of the best events of the city and one of our favorite events. And I think the last time that we actually did a really great, well, we did have one the last year, but it was under the farmer's, out in the farmer's market. It was outside, and we did, although fun, this is the first time we're gonna be back in the inside at our city center. And this'll be wonderful. And we're looking forward to being back inside and having it somewhat back to normal. And so please come, please come to enjoy. And as Mark said, that we are going to be highlighting some of our Ukrainian neighbors. Warren has a very large contingent of Ukrainian residents. They have the Ukrainian Cultural Center there. And so this is an opportunity for us to support everyone and all of the diversity that we have in our city, but especially our Ukrainian families. I'm, my husband is Polish, and we still think that there's a Ukrainian contingent there somewhere. But, he's very Polish. But he, we need to support each other. As the world has come out to support the Ukrainian population, we need to always come out and support each other when there's oppression. And I ask that you guys come to the event and support everyone and all of our diversity. So look forward to that. And just, that's it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Anyone else? Okay, so I'd like to bring something up. I would like to ask, with the council's consent, that the administration create a group of administrators, a task force perhaps, or some other word, whatever, it doesn't matter to me, to study the issue of marijuana and the potential for marijuana businesses in the city of Sterling Heights. What we typically do in situations where we might want to vote on a proposal or an ordinance is, like with the Human Rights Ordinance a couple months ago, we just said, administration, propose an ordinance, and then we vote on it. However, I don't think that that would be very productive on a topic like this, which is sure to be somewhat controversial, and it touches on a number of different departments. Particularly questions about if marijuana businesses were permitted in Sterling Heights, where would they be located? I think that's a question that our planning department, our city planner, would have some expertise on. If marijuana businesses are permitted in the city of Sterling Heights, what is the impact going to be on traffic, on crime, on movement of people and vehicles and non-motorized movement? movement? And are there areas where it would be better suited or not better suited? And I think our police chief would be valuable in providing information on that aspect of it. Anytime that, any cities that have passed these proposals have had a number of issues relating to how a successful applicant is chosen and how the application process goes. And there are a number of factors that other cities use. I think our city clerk would be involved in that process if something were implemented, and I'd like to know what her feelings are on the issue, and have her available as part of this task force. Obviously, we've seen other cities have gotten involved in this, and many other cities have not been able to avoid the pitfalls that I would like to see the city of Sterling Heights avoid. So our city attorney is very knowledgeable about that. Our city attorney represents other cities across, cities and townships across Metro Detroit, and has familiarity with the, what's going on in other cities, and I'd like, I think our city attorney would be somebody that can help in that regard. And I also think there's a potential for increased revenue, there's a potential, however, for decreased revenue. Those are open questions. I'd like to know how it is going to impact the other businesses in the city of Sterling Heights, how it would impact economic development in Sterling Heights. And I think our Economic Development Advisor, Luke Bonner, would be able to help provide information in that regard. So what I envision is a group of administrators, city officials, not elected officials, I'd like this to be untainted by political processes to the extent possible, so that an independent group of professionals in the city of Sterling Heights who are going to be directly responsible for implementing an ordinance and/or not implementing it, and have the actual people who, the department heads, that this is going to affect most closely, work together to gather information, determine the feasibility of something like this, and then report back to the city council with information that they're able to determine if they believe that they need to go out and do forums, focus groups, meet with residents, talk to business owners, talk to stakeholders, engage consultants who have information. I would say I leave that completely up to the administration. This is my recommendation, it's by no means something that I think is, needs to be set into stone. I have given it some considerable thought. I would welcome any feedback, but I would like to think that over the course of three to six months, maybe somewhere right in the middle, would give the city administration enough time to form a group like that, give them the opportunity to work if there needs to be any more direction. Like I said, I don't really want it to come from me or the city council, I'd like for the administration to do this outside of the political process, so that it's not tainted at all, and then we can hopefully receive a report back that provides guidance to the city council in making a determination in what to do with that information. So, I know that's a lot, tried to talk to each one of you individually and give you a heads up about what I would be asking for tonight. So ultimately, I guess I'm asking that we give the administration direction to run with that. Anybody have any thoughts?
Yes, Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Saroski?
Could I make sure this is clear, that we are not asking the administration to gather information with the intent of deriving an ordinance, but to give us information specifically with just that, it's an information gathering session?
Yeah, let me be clear about that. I've made no secret that I think that it's something that the city council should consider. But what I'm not asking for is that the city go, gather information, and then come back and present to us with all the reasons why we should pass an ordinance to allow marijuana businesses in Sterling Heights. That's not what I'm asking, and it's not what I want. I want something that's completely untainted by that, something where you have independent people who are just looking at this from a feasibility standpoint, gathering information and then presenting it to the city council without any preconceived ideas about what their end goal should be. I want a report that is honest and lays out all the reasons why it might work, why it might not work, what the pitfalls are, what we, why it would be great, why it would be terrible. Whatever they come up with is what I want reported, and nothing else.
Thank you. That sounds reasonable.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Mayor Taylor, so first of all, I think what you're asking of administration is extremely time consuming. And I'm wondering if hiring a consultant is also part of this. I guess through the chair, to Mr. Vanderpoel, what is, what are your thoughts as far as, you know, these directors or administrators or whomever? I mean, if they're going to be going out into businesses in the community and doing all this fact finding, that's a lot of time. What are your thoughts on it, and do you think three to six months is reasonable? Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Schmidt, very good question. I think we would definitely need the guidance of a consultant, someone who has some significant experience in working with other communities through a similar process. I don't necessarily think we'd be blazing a trail with the study, but I do think without a consultant, it would be really tough for us to meet that timeframe, say, six months, without a consultant helping guide us through it and organizing the community engagement process, the feedback, the forums, not to mention engaging with businesses and other entities across the city. So, would be pretty involved, and I would respectfully request that the city allow us, the city council allow us to report back, I don't know what a reasonable period is, in 30 days, with what does the task force structure look like, what is the scope of service that we'll be looking at over the next three to six months, estimated cost of a consultant, because that would either have to be incorporated into the budget or a budget amendment necessary, and assuming then we're all on board with the structure, the task force and so on, then we can move forward and execute the scope of service.
So I guess I would be more comfortable getting that information before I would go forward with the task force.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Like I said, I'm just giving one recommendation, and I just really want to get the ball rolling, get something started, and so if it's the consensus of council that we say, if you can report back in 30 days with an idea of what a consultant would cost, what kind of work they'd be able to do, how they'd be able to lighten the load on our city staff, because I think you're right, that if I want to know, if the police chief can report back on how these businesses impact crime and traffic safety in other cities, and a consultant is like, oh, I've got all that data right here that I can provide for you, then it's going to save the chief a lot of time, and the same with every other aspect of it. So I think that's a great suggestion, and I'm perfectly open to that idea, that you report back in 30 days with who the task force members would be, what kind of consultant we would need, whether we would need to vote on a contract for a consultant, all that stuff. If you can do it in 30 days, that's great.
And I think possibly if council could reach out to Mr. Vanderpoel and maybe give some of our ideas of what we would be looking for within that task force, information and questions and so forth.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's my goal, is to, rather than just say, give us an ordinance and let us vote on it, I know that that's going to create nothing but hundreds of questions about how do these work in other cities, what's the best practice in terms of where should they be located, number of business establishments, how much revenue are we going to be getting from them? And none of that stuff can be answered in a typical two weeks between first introduction and adoption. So I want to be very deliberate about it, get as much information as possible so that we can make a good decision about whether this is even something that needs to be brought up. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor? I'd really like to say that I agree with you, but I don't. I have been doing research throughout the state as, from other cities, about what's happening with bringing marijuana dispensaries or other businesses into those communities. And I've yet to have anybody tell me that it was a positive movement. In some cases, it's just that they were blindsided and ended up doing it because of a loophole. So they end up having, whether it be a dispensary or a grow, it doesn't matter, but the experiences that I've had and the questions that I've asked about it throughout the state have not been positive. The other thing is, is I would be really disingenuous tonight if I said that even, to say, go ahead and do this, when I know in my mind, when push comes to shove, I would vote no on this. I don't want it in the city, I've made it a fact that this isn't something that I want, I don't want it in our community. The only people that I hear from, ever, I mean, are the people that don't want it. And to stand up and keeping it out of the community, so I think that to say, oh yeah, go ahead, and I'll be broad-minded about this, and you're going to collect all this information, and we're going to spend all this money, but I have to tell you right now, my answer would be no. And I have to be upfront with you, I'm not going to change my mind.
Okay.
So, but I just feel that the few people that are getting pressured about doing this are the ones that want to open the business here. And some of them don't even live here. And when you look around the other communities, if you want, I'm not saying don't use it, I'm not saying that at all, it's legal, you can use it, you can grow it legally, I'm not saying that you can't do that. I'm just saying that I don't want it being sold in our community. I don't want it to be grown in our community. And that's how I feel, and like I said, you wanted to know if we had any objections, and I just want to be very honest about it, that even if you put this task force together and it costs money, I will still be voting no on this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yenness?
So I know the city of Gaylord did this in three months with a combined panel of citizens, business owners, and city leaders, including the police chief. If there's consultants that do this, I'd love to know about it, if that's an actual business. I mean, we've only had this law implemented for, going on, what, just over two years? So, I don't know what a consultant would look like, other than maybe just, I don't know, I don't know what, where are we going to find a consultant that's going to do this, other than we can just hire an attorney to do the research? I think this can be done in a way that we're just, we're having a meeting to have a meeting, it sounds like, right? We're going to hire a consultant and talk about hiring a consultant, and how much we're going to pay the consultant, when the fact of the matter is, I think that we can probably do this in a very short amount of time. The model that the city of Gaylord used had input from everybody, and it was a very good model, and like I said, they did it in approximately three months. So, I support what you're suggesting, I don't think that we should overthink this, it is just a fact finding event, and I don't really want to spend a whole lot of money on it, but I do think that we definitely need to have some of the answers to the questions that you brought up, the questions that the citizens will bring up. I just like to know what consultants are out there that would do this kind of work. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yenness. And maybe if you could provide that information that you have regarding the process in Gaylord administration?
Sure, absolutely.
I think that would probably be helpful. Anyone else, council? Mrs. Kosky?
I don't believe that we would need a consultant. We have legal staff, we have a city attorney that I'm sure that can provide a great deal of information. Going to MML, coming up a couple of weeks, I believe there's some classes that they're having, some sessions on marijuana. I'm sure that we could get information from them. And how about Lansing? Doesn't Lansing have some records as to what's taken place in the last few years? I don't feel that I would want to spend money to hire a consultant to do this. I feel that we're capable of doing it in-house ourselves with the information that I'm sure our city attorney could make available to us.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Adke?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have much to add. I'd just say that I think that the fire chief, which you didn't mention, should be a member of this task force, and I look forward to the report. I think it's about time to really dig in, and I would just say that, having talked to other cities, Hazel Park told me this is something that they were very in favor of, and they were almost the first to write the ordinance on. So I wouldn't say that cities haven't welcomed it. I talked to the mayor of Hazel Park, and he was very much in favor of it. But I can understand some of the concerns, and I'm hoping the report will answer them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Vanderpoel, do you have clear direction? I think you do, but why don't you tell me in your own words?
Mayor, I'm not sure if the, it might be helpful to actually have a vote, I don't know if the city attorney agrees, there was some disagreement on whether we should proceed with the task force from a couple of members, but I think there is consensus, I think you're right about that.
Yeah, I mean, I thought I only heard one strong no in terms of proceeding, there were a couple that said, do we need a consultant? And what I thought you would do is, over the course of the next 30 days, you would make a recommendation for the city council in terms of what the task force might look like, what their objective and scope of work would be, and whether or not you recommend the use of a consultant, and then you'd come back to get approval from the city council.
I think that's fair. That's my understanding.
Mayor Taylor? Can I just clarify what I meant?
Sure.
It doesn't necessarily mean that we need a consultant. What I'm saying is, I think putting pressure on administration to get this done in three months, when they have other work that they do on a day-to-day basis, I don't want to jam up our administration. So, it's, there's fact finding and a lot of questions, and so it's not, I don't think it's necessary specifically that we need a consultant, however, I just think, I don't want administration jammed up with this project, when there's a lot of other things going on as well, so.
What if we, what if we say, Mr. Vanderpoel, that when you come back to us in 30 days, you have a recommendation in terms of a timeframe and a timeline in order to balance the workflow that the rest of the directors have, so that this does not become too onerous on them? Is that...
Sure, Mayor, I think we could come back with a couple of options. One might be a more expedited process with a consultant, if council's in desirous in proceeding, that might expedite things. We could have another option of us just doing it internally, we certainly have the capability to do it internally and the expertise, I'm not suggesting we don't. It is a matter of allocating resources, especially in light of some of the other things we talked about earlier in the meeting with respect to strategic planning and so on and so forth. So, I think the direction's clear, we'll report back, and if council doesn't mind, we'll give you a couple of options, perhaps with a preferred option we'd recommend, but at least you'll have some good information.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, I think, I appreciate that, I think that that's a good first step, and that's all I have tonight. Anyone else with any final words? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, supported.
Been moved and supported, with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.